Good afternoon. Good afternoon. Welcome. We're going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. It is Tuesday, August 27, 2024, 5:00 p.m. We'll call our official board meeting to order. Buenas tardes. Si usted necesita intérprete en esta tarde, tenemos intérpretes disponibles. Por favor, levante la mano y les podemos ayudar con el interpre- con interpretación para esta reunión esta tarde. If you do need an interpreter this afternoon, we do have interpretation available in several languages. Just raise your hand and we'll make sure that we have an interpreter, one of our staff persons come and help you out to make sure that you do have your interpretation needs met. So if you do need an interpreter, let us know. Raise your hand. One of our staff persons will be able to assist you. Thank you, everybody, for joining us. Board colleagues, thanks. Great to see you. Dr. Stubblefield, to all of our staff. Welcome. To any guests that we have present, welcome. Thank you for joining us, both in person and online. It's great to see everybody. As we do at every board meeting, we'll read our board norms and protocols. We agree to respect differences of opinions in making decisions for the district, to follow best practices in managing the superintendent and the management of the board itself, to stay on task when conducting business for the district, including while at board meetings, to never surprise the superintendent or each other when conducting official business of the district, to read these norms at the beginning of each board meeting and at board workshops as a reminder of how to conduct our meetings, and to continually self-check to determine if we're following our norms when conducting district business. Again, great to see everybody. Welcome. Thank you for joining us. And with that, I will ask Ms. Smith, please do a roll call.
Yolanda Clark.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, present.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, present.
Robert Mylan Jr.
Robert Mylan Jr., present.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, present.
Rachel Russell.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, present.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now entertain a motion to approve tonight's regular agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Are there questions or discussion? Seeing and hearing none. Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.
Mylan Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. The agenda has been approved. Now that we are back in school in full swing of things, it's always great that we get to, one of my favorite parts of our agenda, when we get to celebrate our scholars and our students and the great work that they're doing. Again, welcome back. It's great to have everyone back in the classrooms. And tonight is, we get to start with another celebration. So I'll ask Dr. Lucero to come forward, and she is going to have a special celebration for us tonight. Welcome, Dr. Lucero.
Good evening, Board members and our board members.
Evening.
Evening.
And participating staff and audience, I'm so excited, I am Dr. Lucero, to bring before you Liliana Aquino, who was an eighth grader at Carl Bruce. She is now a ninth grader at Wyandotte. Liliana. Well, the celebrity poet for tonight, she made a third place at the JAG conference across the state in Kansas, which is phenomenal. So can we give her a round of applause? I'm so excited because her teacher is here to speak more, but before, some fun facts. When she grows up, you are going to see her face often because she will become a news anchor.
All right, all right.
And she is from El Salvador, and her favorite food is one of my favorite foods, babosas, that her mom makes, and her parents were into onions.
Good afternoon, you all. Thank you so much, Dr. Stubblefield and board. I appreciate you all. Sending out my thanks while I just did these few books right here for a second. Just want these to be visible. And then, I'm actually just going to sit this one right here. My name is Lakeisha Harvey. I am your Call Me Bruce JAG specialist. I am coming up one year, too. Thank you all so much for the opportunity. And now, it is storytime. Back in 2003, our district had the opportunity to graduate a young lady. This young lady went to a school that shall remain unnamed. She had a teacher that shall remain unnamed. Her teacher looked her in the eye and said, "Give up writing. You're never going to go anywhere with it." While the teacher and the school will remain unnamed, the young lady will not. Her name is Latrice McKinney. These are the books she published. Latrice McKinney, in 2023, was named one of the most influential women in the United States, the top 100. She writes for DC and Marvel. She's in negotiations for productions about her books. I have one burning question that fuels me in how I treat my students like Liliana. What if my sister will leave her teacher? I'm an alumni of Wyandotte High School.
All right, all right.
At this school. However, I graduated from Wyandotte with a full athletic scholarship, partial academic scholarship on National Honor Society, but that was not before I was not coached by the great Jason Pendleton, the great Al Hobson, who brought Maurice Green to coach him, who brought Gail Devers to coach me, here in KC Cap. Lila Monday was a pillar in my high school career. She sat on the city council. She's responsible for many of the low-income homes that are here right now. She was a teacher at Wyandotte High. My grandmother was the first black woman I saw wear a cap and a gown, in her picture. I'm the second one. My educational roots run deep here in Wyandotte. That's why I take it seriously when Liliana comes to my class and I realize that there are Latrice McInneys in the making. How could I ever look a Latrice in the face and say, "Never write again"? How could I ever look a Liliana in her eyes with the full support of her parents here and tell her, "Don't you dare do another speech, because you're not good enough"? The day she performed, I looked over and Liliana was leaning against the wall, face flushed, a couple of tears in her eyes. Another specialist said, "Oh, she's afraid." I said, "That's not fear. I know this." I ran over and I said, "Liliana, this is not fear. Fear is present, but this is not that. This is the feeling that you get when you are about to come with you. So you feel all those feels, and you go before them judges, and you be you because you are amazing." And she squared up, wiped her eyes, and walked before the judges. When Liliana came out of that room, we celebrated before we even knew what her score was, before we knew she placed, before we knew she made it to nationals. We celebrated because we knew that she would never be the same after that moment. Cynthia Gardner, Stacy Chapman, I have prayed for this woman. Liliana and the Latrice McInneys to come deserve specialists like Jackie Brandonberg, who's at Wyandotte High right now and is now Liliana's current specialist. Jackie stays in my phone about our scholars, and I stay in hers.
I call for my brainstorming twin, because we got all the ideas about JAG. But I bring that up because when Liliana was competing, the very timeframe, I received a big file of letters that came from Wyandotte High School's JAG seniors, simply motivating my eighth graders. Couldn't have been better timing. I posted those letters outside the wall, took pictures of my scholars reading them, and sent them to Jackie. Tamiya, also another specialist at Wyandotte, pillar for my success. And I bring them up because Wyandotte is a theater school from Carl Bruce. However, how I operate with the Wyandotte JAG specialists is how I operate with all the JAG specialists in our district. We are like this. That same camaraderie that I felt with JAG, I felt the moment I walked into Carl Bruce. In fact, when I walked in with Ms. Cynthia, a woman from behind the desk yelled, "You're Yanni's daughter!" It was Ms. Lenora, the great. I thought to myself, "How does she recognize me after 40 years?" I'll tell you how. The same way Ms. Chapman messed up her surprise. We wanted to give her this big gift basket with Bath &amp; Body Works in it, all these gifts, and we decided the best way to give it to her was to trick her. So we came up with this plan where we would have the students act like they're fighting, and she got to come in and break up the fight. And when she breaks up the two students, they're standing there with the baskets, and they're going to give them to her, right? So I had the admin team involved. I had other teachers involved, and we ready. They whispering, "She's coming, she's coming, she's coming." And I'm like, "Everybody get ready. Everybody get in position." She comes, and I'll go running out. And I'm like, "Ms. Chapman, come quick. Such-and-such is fighting." And you know, Ms. Chapman, she don't break a sweat. So she, she coming. And she like, "Who?" I said, "Such-and-such, come on." She stopped, had her walkie-talkie, and went like this. "I know those two young men. They didn't do that." I said, "I don't got time to prove it. Come on!" So she actually gets into the room, but that moment when she stopped and said, "I know those two young men. They didn't do that," that moment was pivotal for me. That was the moment I decided that I was going to do everything that I could to remember my scholars 40 years later. That was the moment that I decided that I would never look a Liliana in her face and tell her, "You are not great enough because you are." That was the moment. That was the moment I decided I was going to walk in my generational legacy of education. And I vowed to Liliana and every single scholar that comes through that classroom, that they will be treated with respect, dignity, and as individuals. There is no blanket approach for them. Takes a lot of emotional intelligence to treat 60 people 60 different ways so that none of them feel disrespected. But it's possible if you're intentional about it. Liliana isn't the only Liliana that we have. We have many Lilianas. We have many Latrices. And I'm so honored to be a part of a program that says, "Liliana, you can do exactly what my sister did, and more, and better, and for your family." So I just want to thank you all for acknowledging what she's done, what the program has done, and how we've supported one another. So to Liliana, I will always cry when I see you. That's our thing. We cry when we see each other. But I think that it's because I look at her, and I remember that moment when she faced the fear, and I know that feeling. And she's going to feel it again, and again, and again. And I want to ensure that there's somebody by her that doesn't say, "Oh, girl, you scared. It's okay to be scared. Baby, it's not fear. That's facing fear. You need to know the difference between the two if you're going to educate Lilianas and Latrices." So, to the school board, I ask that you continue to make decisions that allow us JAG specialists to operate in the freedom that we do. I pray that you continue to make decisions that gives Liliana the elevation that she deserves as a scholar here in our district. And I pray that you see the camaraderie and the authenticity that we as JAG specialists offer our scholars. Because it's not just Liliana. It's Liliana and every single one of them that competed last year. She's one of 60. They did a 10-page business plan with a cover letter and a resume and interviewing. Those who didn't want to present did an 88-question financial literacy test in middle school. These kids are amazing. And I'm so honored that I get to celebrate you. And I'm so honored that I get to celebrate the Lilianas behind you. And I'm so happy that Jackie gets to have you. I'm so happy that Wyandotte gets to experience you. And thank you for letting me experience you. And thank you all for giving her the stage, the platform, and the praise that she needs to keep going because she needs it. We're a village, and she needs her village. And I just want to thank y'all for being a part of that village. I thank you all so very much, and I pray that you don't tell Ms. Chapman the story I told about her. Thank you and good evening.
I bless you.
Congratulations, Liliana, to you, to your amazing teachers and educators, to your family. We're so proud of all of you. Thank you. And congratulations again to all of you. We're very excited to see what's to come from you. And I think we could probably just end our board meeting after that. I don't think we need to do anything else. Congratulations. Well, thank you. And we look forward to continued opportunities to celebrate our staff and our scholars and the amazing things that you'll continue to do in this school year. So congratulations. We'll continue with our agenda next. And our agenda is item three. We have no one signed up for community comment tonight, board. But just as a reminder, folks can sign up by reaching out to Ms. Smith, our board clerk, prior to the board meetings, the Monday prior to the board meeting at noon, to sign up. Next agenda item is item four is our consent agenda. It's our motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Are there questions or discussion? Seeing and hearing none. Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.
Robert Mylan Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next agenda item, board, agenda item 5A. As part of our budget process, it's recommended the Kansas City, Kansas Board of Education approve publication of the notice of hearing for the revenue-neutral rate in 2024-2025 budget as submitted by Ms. Tracy Kaiser, Mr. Steve Lilly, and is recommended by Dr. Anna Stubblefield.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Are there questions or discussion? Seeing and hearing none. Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.
Mylan Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next agenda item, 5B, board. It is recommended the Kansas City, Kansas Board of Education approve the low bid from commercial restaurant equipment in the amount of $30,854.52 for replacement of the walk-in cooler at Eisenhower Middle School in accordance with the requirements of Board Policy DJED, as submitted by Mr. Wayne Correll, Mr. Steve Lilly, and is recommended by Dr. Anna Stubblefield.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions or discussion? Seeing and hearing none. Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.
Robert Mylan Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Our next agenda item, board, we are at 6A. Tonight, we will hear a report regarding our academic data, Kansas Assessment and Quarter Four Data. Anything you want to add, Dr. Stubblefield, before we have our presenters come up?
No, they are coming, and they'll share the information from the quarter four in academic performance last quarter, last, at the end of the school year, in the CAP assessments. And they'll also forecast like what we will be doing moving forward around presenting our data. So I will turn it over.
Thank you.
Buenas noches. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Board President Lopez, Vice President Russell, Superintendent Dr. Stubblefield, board members, colleagues, staff, and community members. I'm Dr. Danita Fernandez Flores, the Executive Director of Diploma Plus College and Career Instructional Programs. Today, I'm joined by Dr. Conrad to share our Kansas Assessment Program scores and our absenteeism and behavior reports for the 2023-2024 school year. We'll start with an overview of the systems and frameworks that support our students' learnings and outcomes. Oh, it's not up. Is it? Oh, there we go. Thank you. Sorry. Our North Star guides every decision we make, ensuring that all student graduates are prepared for college, career, and life. This year, I'm proud to report that we've not only met, but exceeded this goal. We know where we're aiming for, and all of our systems are working together to support our staff and help our students achieve a Diploma Plus. Now, let's look at how these efforts align with our school improvement plans and board goals. Our system's school improvement process, we visualize as these spheres of influence. This visual process connects our board goals, state requirements, and district strategies directly to the work happening in classrooms, ensuring every step we take is aligned with improving student outcomes. Our strategic plan is the glue that holds everything together, guiding each department to work cohesively toward our shared goals. Three years ago, Lead and Learn Team identified these three key areas to prioritize as part of our learning systems. These priorities also align with the new four key fundamentals of Kansas' new accreditation process. When we compare our board goals with the state outcomes, it's clear that our board themes directly align with the state goals. This slide shows the data that different departments and school staff monitor in order to track our progress towards these state outcome areas. It's important to note that we review this data at different times throughout the year. We're reviewing one of those today. By reviewing data at strategic points throughout the year, we can make timely adjustments to keep our initiatives on track. The outcomes we measure reflect the work happening in our classrooms. The frameworks in these slides are designed to support teaching and learning, ensuring we maintain high academic standards and provide social, emotional support. A crucial part of this support is ensuring that students are present and engaged in school. We know that students can't succeed if they aren't in school, which is why our Student Services teams have developed and implemented effective programs to promote attendance. Building on this, our attend-to-achieve protocols have been instrumental over the past few years. Over the past three years, our attend-to-achieve protocols have been expanded to more schools, and they continue to play a key role in improving attendance. In addition to attendance, restorative practices play a key role in supporting a positive learning environment. These are designed to build a strong community in our schools, teach critical social skills, repair harm when conflict happens, and proactively address student needs, especially trauma-related ones, so that misbehavior becomes less common. With that foundation in place, I'll now hand it over to Dr. Conrad, who will present our academic behavior and attendance data.
Good evening, board. I'm Dr. Conrad, and we're going to go over some of the outcome results that we saw from last year, starting with our CAP data. But before we dive into that, I do want to acknowledge that we are putting data on a public dashboard. The link is embedded here in the slides. This is on the DERA website, so it is publicly available. It does contain last year's data. It will also contain data for this upcoming school year. As data becomes available, we will update the scorecards. There are two options. There is a tab for the district overall data, but then there is also another tab for building level data. And so you will be able to access individual building data through the public-facing So diving into our CAP data, we're going to separate it into two. One is going to be the ELA performance, and then the other is going to be the math performance, staying consistent with what we have presented in previous board presentations. As we could see, we are fairly stable when it comes to the percent of our students in each of the categories over the last three years. There has not been a lot of movement. But one area where we have seen some movement is the middle school. So I'm looking at the 2024 under the middle, where we do see a decline from 64% to 57% in our Level Ones and an increase from 23% to 28% in our Level Twos. Across race and ethnicity, we have, again, remained fairly stable. We do see more movement when it comes to percentages based on small numbers. And so when we have small populations, the percentages adjust more significantly than when we have larger populations, but relatively stable across the three years. One of our bright spots are our students that are former ELL students. These were students that were in the ESOL program or receiving ESOL services, who have exited out of ESOL services. We see here that they have higher percentages in Level Two across the board. And that is one of the few spots where we see where Level Two is outperforming the majority of the students at the grade level or in the subcategory. And so we know, we're able to see when we are able to exit, our students out of the ESOL program, we see tremendous movement there, and that's fantastic. The disability status, we are still seeing discrepancies there, but again, we see that it is fairly stable over time. The math performance is similar, and here I've kind of highlighted some of those differences where we are seeing at the middle school level, again, we see that they are decreasing in Level One and increasing in Level Two. We also saw that at our high school level, where we saw a reduction in our Level One and an increase in Level Two. Within the race category on math, we see that that is also fairly stable across the races. Here again, we see former ELL students that are outperforming, where they, they have more students in that performance Level Two than they have in performance Level One. So again, a terrific sign that as we are given the time and afforded that time to allow our ELL students to learn the language and to adjust, they excel. And since a large portion of our student body is ELL students, it's terrific to see that we are progressing them through the system, and they are successful. Again, we see that students with disabilities, there is a disparity in those two groups, but it is fairly stable over the three-year period. Absenteeism, we are seeing that chronic absenteeism is decreasing at all three levels, elementary, middle, and high. We see that this continues with all races and demographics. We do see a slight uptick with American Indian or Native Alaskan subgroup, but again, there are smaller numbers there that are impacted when we calculate percentages. We're also seeing by ELL status that it is, our lowest group is the former ELLs. They did have a slight increase, but it was a 0.2% increase there, but all others were decreasing. By disability status, we don't see as much of a disparity here. It's a lot closer, but they are also decreasing over time. So that's terrific to see that trend. Behavior incidences have also decreased over time at all three levels, elementary, middle, and high. We do see some uptick. Again, it's the small numbers that are impacting the percentages, but we see decreases across the board in the number of incidences. Same trend with ELL status, same trend with students with disabilities. Suspension rates. Suspension rates, we are, are seeing an increase across the board in some of our percentages, the percentage of students experiencing suspension. We see that this really is happening at the high school level. That's where we saw that increase this last year, whereas the middle school and elementary both saw decreases. ELL status also saw an increase. The same with disability status. And so we would anticipate that with seeing a higher increase overall, that all subcategories also went up. Any questions before I turn it back over to Dr. Fernandez-Flores?
The Board will have opportunities for continued questions as you're thinking of them during the presentation.
And so we are going to present on our next steps. As we continue to make progress, it's essential to stay focused on key areas. We are committed in identifying and implementing high-quality instructional materials and routines. This includes continuing the implementation of SIUP framework to support all learners. Additionally, we will maintain our focus on universal, high-quality instructional strategies, such as active supervision, aggressive monitoring, and instructional feedback. We must ensure that every educator understands that we are all responsible for the success of every student. We will continue the implementation of our plans for attendance as well as continue the implementation of restorative practices plans. And as we continue to implement our focus programs, it's critical to understand that the success of our programs directly depends on how thoroughly they are implemented. The more we commit to these practices, the greater the positive impact on our students. Our leadership and learning teams and DERA are collaborating on future report formats that can provide a clearer picture of the work and resulting outcomes. We plan on providing the degree of implementation to our reports. What do I mean? In the culture that I come from, we tend to use a lot of analogies. So stay with me on this analogy. If I plan to run a 5K race, I may first research the tennis shoes I will need and the type of training I may endeavor in. Then I will begin. And when I begin, I may start by walking, then move to walk-run intervals, and eventually run the entire distance. The implementation of our programs goes through similar stages. We begin with installation, where the groundwork is laid, and we move then to an initial implementation where the program is adopted but still developing. And finally, we reach full implementation, where the program becomes a fully integrated part of our daily practice. Each stage is critical, and though we might not see immediate results, changes in behaviors are happening that will eventually lead to improved outcomes. This final slide is an example of what we are preparing for future data reports. The implementation levels are illustrated at the bottom of this slide. On the far right, you will notice the dark blue section representing the installation phase, which is like the walking stage in our 5K analogy. Here's where we're laying the groundwork. But the results, as you see with the bar graph, such as reducing absenteeism, are not yet evident. Moving to the light blue section, initial implementation, is like the walk-run phase, where the program is beginning to show results, and we might see improvements in absenteeism. Finally, the orange section represents full implementation, meaning the schools are running fully with the program, and we see a significant decrease in chronic absenteeism across the board. And so as we close, I want us to remember that while we've made some strides, we must keep our focus and commitment to strong and continued supporting of every program in support of our student and district. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Fernandez-Flores and Dr. Conrad. I'll open up for questions. Ms. Brownlee Page.
When you said small population, how big are these class sizes that you're talking about? I know when I was teaching, we had First Things First, and the goal was 1 to 18. So what are your numbers when you say small? And it has proven that if it is smaller, it does work better. But what numbers? You say small, what does small represent?
So what I'm actually referring to is when you do a percentage, if you have one out of two students, right? Only one of them is chronically absent. That makes 50%. And so that's, when you have small numbers, it really impacts your percentages. It can go wild all over the place, right? But if you have larger numbers, that denominator is bigger, then the percentages don't fluctuate nearly as much. And so when you're looking at something over time, if you have small counts of students in that group, small denominators, then your percentages can look like they're bouncing all over the place, when really it's just because the class size is smaller than when you have thousands of students in that category. Then it doesn't move as much when just a few students move. And so it's really about the percentage adjusting. It adjusts a lot more when there's smaller, smaller size of students.
For clarity, you're speaking about the student population, not about specific class sizes.
Yeah.
Okay.
The overall student population.
So like when you look at the different demographic groups, if you only have 50 students who identify as Asian, they, if a few of them do well, it'll jump up sooner than if you had 500 students who were African-American. You can have two students in both categories jump up, but it's going to look like they improved a great deal more just because of the N size.
I, I hear what you're saying. That's kind of goofy. But what about small class sizes, period? To help the kids grow? Because you'd have to make the classes small. You can't put 40, 45, 50 and think you're going to have great success.
Right.
So the smaller you can make the classes.
The information we presented tonight, we didn't break it down by class size. We can share with the Board in the end of the week what the ratios are and what the thresholds are for each level, but that also varies building by building. And I, you know, to your point, when you were teaching First Things First, we would have 300 applicants for one elementary position. We, over the years since COVID, and that's every district, have had to make sure that we have a certified instructor in front of people. So while, even if we had the dollars to make the class sizes smaller, if we can't hire the people, and that's what happened our first year. Like I think about one of our high schools that had about 30 openings on the first day, and it was because we had allocated the money for the positions, but the applicants didn't exist. So when we combined some classes, so instead of having 1 to 15 in six sections, when you drop it to four, you have 1 to 21. And that happens more often now. So if the pool of applicants, certified applicants for that occurs, and we allocate the FTE, we can have small sizes. And some of our, I've been in multiple buildings this week. I've been in kindergarten classes with 14, and I've been in kindergarten classes with 26. But it really just depends on where the building is, what the threshold is, and the population of that. So we can give you that. Yeah.
That would help. Because when I hear small population, I just wanted to make sure I'm clear, and he's not talking about that to a certain degree.
Yeah.
But I was wondering. It would help if they were smaller, because you can do more depending on the school. It varies. And then my other question, what are we doing? You, you gave the analogy of a race. So how do I involve the parents in this race so the kids can be successful? Because you got to get them involved. And I, I know that's a hard element to work, but we still got to do what we can to get them involved. And can you give some examples of things that we've done and are doing to get our parents more involved? And then maybe provide, we talk about community relations. I've heard Ms. Russell say that over and over again. How do we get them involved? And how do we help them help their kids run that race?
So we, we do have family advocacy days before school is in session, involving our parents and integrating them into what school will be for them. We are also have the, oh, the curriculum nights. I was going to, it was in the back of the mind, and then I, I lost it. We have curriculum nights as well, one each semester, where we provide our families with information around what their curriculum might be for them, as well as what data, what our buildings are reporting, and also introductions or continued information around Diploma Plus and our supports for, depending on the family, if they're working on FAFSA applications and the like. So it just depends on the school, the level of depth we have with explaining the different resources we have to support the stage of where their student is at.
Yeah. And then in addition to that, Ms. Page, several of our schools do have their PTSAs. They do have their site councils. They also have nights where they invite families, families in for a variety of things. At the end of the year, a lot of you attended the Welcome Center event. So the Welcome Center also does events, and they have a calendar this year of things that they are planning. But our, within each one of our departments, from our multilingual department to our Student Services Department, they all have varying events. But we get the most engagement when it's at the school because parents are connected to the schools. And I don't necessarily have the list of events, but I know you all are aware when it's in your communities or when you hear about them, because schools often will invite you. We're always looking for ways to get parents more engaged. I did launch the application for the Parent and Community Advisory Group. It is still open. We are, we've received lots of applications. And our hope is to have at least one parent or a community member tied to each one of our schools so that we can get their perspectives on a variety of things. And one of the things when we talked about launching it was to have them to work closely with our Welcome Center so we can hear firsthand around things that we, we know what we're doing, but there's lots of opportunity for us to engage at different levels.
I would like to see us share that more because we have, you're trying to get taxpayers to support what we're trying to do. They need to know. Because if you don't have any kids in school, they don't know what we're doing. And then I think we need to do more with restorative justice to make sure that people understand what the program is all about. I'm not saying we haven't.
No, no, I appreciate it.
But I think we need to do more because their interpretation, they just think, I don't know about that. But I don't think they know. And you got to share. You got to put the information out there. Show them, help them, and do some things. Because we're saying we know it, but they don't know it. And you need to be able to put those examples up and put it out so that people can see.
And I would just add, Ms. Brownlee Page, the other piece, that this board intentionally decided to make sure that we're transitioning, to make sure every school has a Faces person in the school. And I don't know, I think everyone was on the email from the Rosedale Faces. I'm drawing a blank on her name, I'm sorry. And they had a pretty great event. I wasn't able to go, but I, I heard some great feedback. And so I think an added element are the Faces folks at each school and making sure that we're integrating all the work that's happening with our Faces, our Welcome Center, and Curriculum Nights, and PTSA. And so just making sure that they're not working in silos. I, I think that's, that's an important element. And, and as, as well as continuing to make sure, you know, this board worked and, and staff worked hard on our community engagement policy and what that, or family engagement policy, and what that looks like. And so I think continuing to make sure that we're reviewing that and holding ourselves accountable to how we do that, I think is, is important as well. So thank you for bringing that up, Ms. Page.
And then, and then one last thing. Because when we look at the attendance and the behavior, I think our minority males, they need some mentoring. And do we, are we providing that for them to help them work their way through this process? Because I didn't hear anybody mention anything about that. And that's a problem. And they need to see the Jarius Jones. They need to see a Randy Lopez. And they need to have some interaction with them.
And can I, before you respond, Dr. Conrad, just to add, Ms. Brownlee Page, I think that's a continued conversation around, when we look at the data and look at the behavioral and suspension rates for African-American student males, particularly in African-American students, I think what are we continuing to do as a board and as a staff to make sure that we're supporting those students and those families? And what are, and, and looking at our own policies and processes that are impacting those males? Because when we look at the data specifically for our African-American male students, the suspension rates and behavior issues continue to be high. When you look at the population that's actually in the district and for, for that population to tie in. So, but you're right, to all males of color, I think it's something that we need to keep an eye on. So just wanted to add that in.
Yeah, I think, I think in future board presentations, the way that it is set up is that we will talk about the things that we are doing. Then we will share the data of whether it's impacting outcomes or not. And then we will say what our next steps are going to be. So the three slides that Dr. Fernandez-Flores shared is we will outline, okay, here's what we're doing. So if mentorship programs are in there, we will list that there. And then we'll be able to see, okay, is that making a difference? And then what are our next steps based on that data?
But just to answer your question directly, there are a few schools that have specific partnerships and mentorships, and we would be able to pull that in. It's not system-wide, but we do have a couple of our high schools that you all approved last year, and I believe they'll be continuing this year with some of those partnerships and mentorships that are happening.
We just need to let people know. Because we know, but they don't know.
And I think one of the things that will be helpful as we engage with different stakeholders is to ask what's the best way to tell them, because we think that we're telling people. But obviously, there's a disconnect. So getting that kind of real-time feedback around how can we share our story? And then what methods do we need to share it so people are aware will be helpful for us.
Dr. Win.
Yeah, this, this slide here, let's stick with your, your analogy of, of running this race. What's your timeframe?
The research and implementation would suggest five years for, five years for you to look at a program, plan how to implement it, install it in, in a system like ours, 49 schools, to be able to disseminate the programming and the information, and then to monitor that whatever we're installing. Say, in this case, we were installing our elementary math curriculum. And so our ability to track how our professional development is being internalized and to monitor if our staff is learning the routines, and then how we can then support them to continually to effectively learn the routines. Until we get to that where we feel like we have now incorporated the stages of the learning within the resource to know, okay, we understand how we're delivering instruction.
Yeah. So to clarify, it's not five years from today. Depending on what we're talking about, they're in different stages of implementation. So we started Avid in our high schools in the '22, '23 school year. So five years from when we started the implementation. So when we're bringing you the information back, we will be able to show you, like, if we started this this year, we're in year four, here's where we are. If we started this last year, we're in year one, and here's where we are. So it will depend on what the initiative is or the resource or that kind of thing. But we will be able to more accurately, like, real-time monitor, like, what it looks like, makes, make adjustments. And then intentionally include our building principles in schools because we see some that are making great progress, but they all implemented at the same time. So what are they doing that we need to replicate? Or what are those variables that are impacting it? So I, I, when they said five years, I saw lots of your faces, like, five years from today. No, it will be five years from whenever we started the implementation of certain aspects or initiatives, curriculum, or whatever we're evaluating.
Okay, so if, if you said we started X in '22, this is '24.
Yes.
Have we been presented that data? And that, that, that result, that impact, as gentlemen said?
It depends. In some ways, we have. Like last year, we gave you, I think it was last year, we gave you an Avid update at the beginning of the year. But what we're doing more intentionally is bringing it all together so you're not seeing it in piecemeals. So when we do the academic report, so you can tie it to like the So when we do the academic report, so you can tie it to, like, the actual outcomes, what we have done and what's been traditionally done, done in a lot of districts is to present it in isolation. So you have seen a lot of the data, like, when we brought the resources back to be renewed, we showed the data. When we brought forth the renewal of TPT tutoring for the two high schools that are continuing, we attached the data to it. So, so that it's not in isolation. We'll still, when we're renewing things, provide the data, but we'll bring it to you in this format so that you can actually see it, ask questions for, so that we can talk about, like, why and hear directly from those who are implementing it as well.
Okay, because I do not believe, while we're immersed in separate and segregated pieces of data, I don't think it's helpful for our community to, to understand that, you know, again, I believe if we would have understood differently, when you said five years, our head exploded.
I apologize for that.
She brought us down off the ceiling.
I'm sorry.
But still, it's, it's not clear and we've got to see success. And we, we, these students cannot, we can't wait, our community cannot wait five years.
No, and there are some things we'll be able to show you, like, tonight when they spoke about JAG, like, the results that those students are experiencing, and when we look at the data around certain, we can show it to you immediately, but we've been doing JAG for a while now, right? Like, but it was only at high schools, but now it's at middle school, so we, we would be able to speak to that. I think where, and it's unfortunate, but it's the reality, a lot of, we are major-based, a lot of people look at CAP and try to define, like, that's the end-all, be-all. But it is an important piece of data. We're not saying that it's not, it is absolutely important, but we need to tell the full story. And, and we are showing progress in that, and we will continue to be intentional about reaching our goals around that. One of the things that we will be a part of this year, that's reality, where we'll have to identify cohort groups, is the at-risk pilot. So as they tell us, like, what data we're looking at, what we are doing, that, that is something that we'll bring forward to the board and the community as well, because that is some, a system that will be implemented at the state level. So we're trying to apply, provide clarity because we've heard you over the last two years, we've tweaked, we adjusted. But what we believe is moving forward, not presenting it in isolation and being clear about how we are allocating resources and dollars, it's impacting the outcomes, will let you see the full story, not only how they're performing in CAP, but how are they doing when they leave the system, where are they going, and those other components. So we hear you and we will look for feedback around, if it's not clear, how can we make it clearer, or what, what, where's the gaps in the information?
Because I know the at-risk pilot, while it may not be clearly stated, but it, it is tied to funding.
No, it is clearly stated that it's tied to funding, that if your cohort doesn't progress in the timeframe, you'll lose a large percentage of the at-risk. It's clearly stated, yeah.
Now, what about CAP? Is it tied to funding?
CAP is the assessment, no, it's not. And.
Not directly, but indirectly with the, one would say, one could say indirectly with the, just tone of performance.
Yeah, yes, but I, I know that there's discussion around, there may be some changes with that, but it is tied as the new, with the new accreditation process, the outcomes around CAP is a big part of that. And so as we go through this first year, we'll be able to share that information as we get it as well.
And that's one same thing the board does need to understand, the new PISA criteria.
Correct, and we'll, as we get the information and those things, we did share it last spring, but we'll continue to, as they have their updates, they're taking something to the state board if they didn't already.
I think they have already.
Yeah, so then they'll share stuff out. We talked about it at the top of the meeting, and we also talked about the things, but there are specific things that they're working through that we'll share, that it's tied to specific outcomes around CAP and graduation rate and SEL and all the things that we are focusing on.
Yes, Ms. Russell.
All right, I have a few questions. When will the CAP data be available for parents? And I guess I could put all of my questions together around the CAP. When will the CAP data be shared with parents? Do staff receive training for how to talk with caregivers, parents about the CAP? And then have we thought about doing a understanding CAP data presentation or something? It is a lot for us to take in, so I can only imagine as a parent and looking at that for one child or multiple children, just, it's a lot of information and not really understanding it, and if, if you haven't looked at it multiple times. So those are my two, three questions.
So first question, the parents have access to CAP about a week, a week and a half after students take the CAP.
Okay.
And so.
In Invinant Campus?
It is through KITE, the portal in which the state puts the assessments and the results. So it's a separate state platform.
Okay.
From KU where the reports.
Do we have that website available on the website?
I'd have to double check.
Okay, I'm just trying to figure out, how does a parent know where their student falls in comparison to our district and into the rest of the?
And so with, with the CAP report that parents get, there's actually a parent guide that goes along with it to help walk through, and that's something that's developed by the state in conjunction with our vendor, KU. And so the information is there for parents to be able to walk through. Teachers also have a report that is built by KSDE and in conjunction with KU. So there's the educator report as well that walks through how to talk to parents about it and those things.
Yeah, and I, I think Ms. Russell's question, and Ms. Russell, I'm, I actually, I don't know the answer, but we can talk to and get to you. Do we intentionally, after the CAP is available, send something to parents saying, your CAP score is available, this is how you access it? Or do we talk about it at FA? And if, the answer to those things are no, that's an opportunity for us to look at the upcoming FA days and either make sure that we provide that information to families and where those guides are. Prior to all of the online stuff, everybody got something in the mail. Well, no one mails it anymore, so I think we just have to be intentional about letting parents know when it's available, how to access it, who to call, and having those talking points for our buildings. So I, but I think that's what she was asking, like, it's out there, but what do we do intentionally to bridge the gap for our families?
Yep, so we notify buildings when it's available. The state notifies us as a district, we notify buildings that it is available. We don't provide guidance on how to then distribute that. And so maybe that's a, a gap that we have from our level to be able to say, okay, buildings.
The first gap is people knowing where to find the information. But I think once people find the information, you, we figure out what information do people want to understand about it, because it may be simple.
I, I think that if, if we wanted to send out some of those guides in either a Friday update or actually walk through one of them.
Yeah, I was just gonna suggest in a follow-up email to Dr. Stubblefield, Parents as Partners newsletter of, like, hey, this is how you navigate this. We, as a board, just talk about it. Okay, I appreciate that.
But could, before you move on, is it in all the languages that are spoken in the district?
It is not translated into all the languages, no.
Okay, but that, you're gonna have to offer that too.
Yeah, and so internally, that's why I'm saying, that's where we can assist families and/or work with our multilingual department and our, and those kind of things to make sure that they can access it. We don't control the KITE site, but we can, we can work behind the scenes to figure out how to make it available, yeah.
And could they use the Welcome Center also?
Yes, the multilingual and the Welcome Center, we can, that is a great opportunity for us. Thank you.
Yeah, the second thing I was just gonna mention was I was gonna echo Randy, but he stole all my words out my mouth. So on February 13th, we did a approved policy, the family engagement policy, that towards the end of it talks about each building will have an active student advisory council and that we would launch a district-wide family engagement group that looked at implementing policy, looked at a variety of things. And so I think it would be important for us to circle back to that as we're continuing this conversation around how do we educate our community on the importance of understanding where your child is in the learning experience and how you can support it. But I also am, have heard about the schedule that the Welcome Center has had. So I was just echoing that. And then lastly, so the public dashboards, I'm really excited about this. However, one piece of, currently, the dashboard does not allow you to scroll over this way, so you can't see any of the data that way. But if you are brilliant enough like myself, you can click on this thing that says Tableau Public. When I go to that Tableau Public or whatever the name of that thing is, it gives me all of these, this information when I'm looking at the scorecard. So I would really appreciate some type of key or understanding of the scorecard that tells me what the data points are that I'm looking at. Because when I look at, and I'm picking on my home school, Frank Rushton, it says total discipline incidents, three. However, the column right underneath it says students with zero discipline incidents, 100%. So if zero, if 100% of the students had zero discipline incidents, then how come the column above says discipline incidents, three? There is no keyboard or information that tells me. And so then I'm like, is this data accurate? Is it true? Because that doesn't make sense to the layman's eye. And then there's some other data in here that I won't make you tell me right now what it means, but I'm just wondering, yes, I can see my building level data, but if I don't have any idea what it means, then it's not really helpful. So that is my feedback, not really a question. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Additional questions or comments?
Those were imaginary students.
I believe that it's rounding.
Oh, okay.
So we're just.
So there's 99% and it got it?
It got rounded up.
Board, as you, as questions arise, there was a lot of information there to unpack. And again, yeah, I'd echo Ms. Russell, thank you for the dashboard. I think that's gonna be very helpful for us as a board, as staff, and as public, so thank you for that. Board, as, as information, questions come up, please share those with Dr. Stubblefield, including other ways you'd like to see the information presented. If you've got other ideas that might be helpful for you, please share that as well. Ms. Clark, I'm sorry.
I'm good, oh, I'm good, go ahead, you're good.
Okay. Okay, so we'll continue with our agenda. Next on our agenda, board, is item seven, Board Policy. We have up for first read tonight, Policy GAOE. Mr. Goheen.
So Policy, G O A E is the current policy recommended by KSB for covering workers' compensation. This was a change that came from KSB late, so we just got it within the last couple of weeks. It is merely an update to address statutory changes in the workers' compensation statute, and so we recommend that you adopt it for first read.
Questions for Mr. Goheen? Now, is there a motion to accept for first read, Policy GAOE?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions or discussion? Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.
Robert Mylan Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
I'm sorry, I should have asked this. Do they have to sign off on this? Once they read it, they go over with it, make sure that they sign?
The, the board policies, is there a?
Well, I mean, the, this is the policy. But when you present this to the workforce, do they have to sign off that they read everything and they?
Not, not board policies. There's a employee handbook that makes reference to some of the policies, that, that they do sign off, all employees do sign off on that. Board policies, is there adopted, they're just placed in the board policy link on?
No, I got that part, but I was just wondering, would they have to sign off that this was reviewed, somebody went over it with them? So they couldn't say, we didn't know or anything, plead ignorance?
Not, not the policies per se, but the handbook and, like I said, the handbook's usually referenced some of these things. You adopt the handbook, so there's changes, but they sign off on those, just like students sign off on the student.
Okay.
And they, they also sign, it's a lot of policy embedded in the mandatory training at the beginning of the year, and everybody has to look at that and sign off on that. But all policies are not in there, but there are quite a few.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Wanda Brownlee Page.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, board. Our next item, 7B, it is, we have our KSB recommended policies up for second read. Mr. Goheen?
These are the policies that the board approved at the last meeting for a first read. I haven't heard of any suggested changes to these from the first read from any board member or the public, so we would ask that they be adopted for second read.
Mr. Mr.
Yes, Dr. Nguyen.
I'd like to move to table, Policy CJ, Hiring Consultants. We had a discussion fifty months ago about having a further conversation about consultants. We hadn't, unless you had it last week, we have not had that conversation. So I would like to move to table CJ until we have that conversation.
There's a motion from Dr. Nguyen to table Policy CJ. There a second?
Second.
There's a second. Is there a discussion or questions?
So I think, maybe I'm, so this is coming recommended from KSB, which I think wouldn't prohibit us from still prohibit us.
Adding, subtracting to it, if that's what you're getting ready to say.
Yes, and so I guess I'm, and I know we're not ready to have that conversation right now, but none of the changes that are being made, to my understanding, are substantial to what we had previously discussed as changes, unless I missed something and I, that is also possible.
I don't know what you're talking about, missing. I do know we talked about evaluations of, of consultants, adding their, their, adding their, their compensation to either together, one by one. So while this is a KSB recommendation, if I'm correct, Mr. Goheen, it does not preclude us adding, subtracting, whatever. But I just don't trust that once we adopt this, we, we will not have the full discussion that we were, we agreed to have. I'm just gonna, full transparency.
And to answer Dr. Nguyen's question, obviously, the board can modify, adopt, adapt, add to any policy modifier, model policy KSB proposes. We've done that, as you guys know from the different board meetings, to multiple policies that are approved. In some instances, we've adopted our whole separate policy from what KSB proposes, so you certainly can do that.
Yeah.
I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Mylan.
First read, when this was brought to our attention, did we discuss, are we doing it now thoroughly dissecting it before we get to this point in the second read? Has Dr. Nguyen stayed to table this or further on down the road? Did we have, what type of discussion did we have previously prior to this?
Yeah, so for this, thank you, Mr. Mylan, for this specific Policy CJ, last board meeting, we did not specifically discuss anything specific around the policy. To be fair, Dr. Nguyen wasn't here to be able to, to raise any questions at the, at the time, so, but we did not have that conversation. We did, it was a part of the, the finance committee meetings that we were having, that conversation of, around consultants where we were reviewing that and that was brought to the board. So in that aspect, that's been brought forward around consultants and how we, to Dr. Nguyen, evaluate and hire, but that's separate from this particular policy?
If I could make a suggestion, in terms of pulling this off, if the board's wanting to look at and have a more in-depth discussion on this particular policy or bring proposed changes. changes, it's still appropriate to bring, bring them and have that discussion in between the first and the second read. Got a motion to table. I know we're bringing some additional policies back in October. Perhaps it makes sense to bring this one back in October for a second read. And as part of that second read, we can have a more robust discussion about the changes that the board might want to make, which could then be incorporated for the third read. It's up to you guys, but that's my.
So Greg, I, in the spirit of transparency, where my question is coming from, is we also did not resolve how policies were adopted outside of KASB recommendations. That was a conversation that we had in that same timeframe. And so I just want to, in the spirit of being true, honest, and transparent, I want to make sure to Dr., and I'm trying to find my words wisely, sorry.
That's why I say I don't trust.
So I'm trying to make sure that that is, if we table this, that we will need to figure out in between now and then how to bring it back for a second read with the modified changes, or we're bringing it back for a second read and we're going to have the bigger conversation around consultants, specifically in that 10,000 to 20,000 who have multiple contracts with the district.
Yeah. And I would point out, this is not the only policy you have in your board policy handbook dealing with consultants too. So it may make sense to look at them all together.
Okay.
There, there's more than one.
Compensation.
Yeah. I mean, if you're wanting to have an actual discussion about what that policy is and have people propose, change language to it, whether it comes from a committee recommendation or whether it comes from individual board members, one, I think it makes sense to have all the consulting policies at the same time in front of the board. And two, you can look at KASB's proposed changes in conjunction with what changes or modifications the board or board members want to make. And then you guys can just vote for what you want for the reads.
So can I amend the motion to include all policies, to table this policy and include all policies related to consultants? And I want to also confirm that if by tabling this item, it doesn't mean it comes up at the next meeting, because I believe we've had this conversation as well.
You could set a specific meeting if you wanted to.
Okay. So to also include consultant, any other policies involving consultants to be taken up at the board retreat in October, or I need an actual date.
That seems pretty clear to me.
Seems clear to me.
Thank you. So moved.
The other list of.
Yes.
At a substitute motion, or are you asking for an amendment to the current motion on the table or on the floor?
Substitute motion, I second substitute motion.
There's a substitute motion, a second motion, or a second to the substitute motion. Additional comments or questions, discussion on the substitute motion, which would be for clarity, to table Policy CJ and other policies relating to hiring consultants until the board retreat in October?
No, that's not what she said.
Mm-mm. Table Policy CJ.
Along with all other policies for consultants?
Those other policies are not before us.
Yeah, they're not in front of you to bring, when you, when you bring it back.
Gotcha, okay.
Board retreat is to include a review of the other policies regarding consultants.
Right. I know I heard other policies. That's what I was hearing.
We're tabling CJ and bringing forth all other policies around consultants at our October board retreat. So I move that we table Policy CJ.
No, you, you, you make a motion for a substitute motion.
I make a motion to substitute.
Motion.
The motion to table Policy CJ and bring forth all other policies regarding consultants at our October retreat. Thank you.
Perfect. Ms. Smith, did you get that?
Close enough.
Yes.
Okay. And there was a second to that. Any additional questions or discussion? Okay, seeing hearing, none. Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.
Mylan Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Goheen, anything else on the current policies in front of us aside from CJ?
So I move to approve Policy BCBK, Policy EE, Policy EBBG, JG, Policy GARI, Policy IF, Policy JGFGA, Policy JQE, Policy JH, Policy KK for second read.
Motion and second on the floor. Any questions or discussion?
One question.
Yes, Dr. Nguyen.
Mr. Goheen, is, does KK totally incorporate the latest version of state law dealing with disposal of district property? From the reading, it seemed like there were a few things that were not in it.
This is the most recent version we got from KASB with the changes from the state law. I will double check it with state law in between this reading and the third read.
Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions? Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.
Mylan Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, board. Our next agenda item, board, we are at item number eight, communications. We will hear from our Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Anna Stubblefield.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. I just have a few announcements this evening. One, again, we're excited about everybody being back in school. We've been in school. It'll be two weeks tomorrow. So overall, we've had a great start. It's been great being in the buildings and seeing the students and our staff. I took my glasses off and now I can't read, but I'll put them back on. So a couple of reminders, we'll have our annual Partners in Excellence Breakfast. Please mark your calendars for the Partners in Excellence Breakfast to be held on October 2nd from 8:00 to 9:30 a.m. at the Kansas City, Kansas Community College Technical Education Center. This year's theme is Better Every Day in Every Way, and it reflects our commitment to continuous improvement in education and community engagement. Visit the foundation website to learn more about how to register for this event. Are you interested in learning more about employment opportunities with KCKPS? Join our awesome HR staff for coffee and chat at the Kinship Cafe on Thursday, August 29th from 8:00 to noon, and visit the district's website for more information. Also, HR has shared several information out for individuals who would like to become paraprofessionals or instructional aides in our district. We are having two fairs to help, to, for those individuals to take the work keys assessments, which is required for a lot of our positions, but also to help staff or, I mean, not staff, help community members who want to know how to navigate that. So they'll be sharing out more information. The first one is September 5th, is that correct? And so the first one is September 5th, and then they have another one planned. So if you know anyone who's looking to join the district in a paraprofessional role, please have them to contact HR for more information. And then lastly, I want to personally give my condolences to the family for Mr. Chester Owens, a hometown hero to so many of us here in our community. His service, services will be this Saturday at Oak Ridge Baptist Church, August 31st. You can find information at the Thatcher's Funeral Home website. And I want to say that so many of us had the honor of attending the recognition ceremony for him a few weeks ago, and I'm grateful for that opportunity. But also, we also lost the local representative, Marvin Robinson Jr., and his family as well. He passed away on last week, and his services will be held Saturday, September 7th, at Young's Memorial. So condolences to both of those families, both individuals contributing to our community through public service and advocacy for our community.
Thank you, Dr. Stubblefield. I'd invite us for a moment of silence as we think about our Mr. Owens and Representative Robinson. Thank you.
And Mr. Lopez, I'm sorry, I didn't.
Yes, Ms. Brownlee Page.
We lost Greg Hall, who was a longtime noted teacher at Sumner Academy, as well as a noted coach in the area. His wife also taught in the district, and they were both very professional and did a lot for people in this area. I'm not sure.
He taught at Sumner High School.
Yeah. And I'm not sure where the services are, because I think it just recently happened.
Yeah, they're pending, yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Brownlee Page. Yeah, definitely, we will keep prayers in for the families of all of those who have fallen. So thank you for sharing that, Ms. Brownlee Page. Just a couple of other announcements on, from me, board, it is the season of celebrations as well. You've received some emails from Mr. Birch regarding some activities out in the community, the diversity parades coming up before our next board meeting. So if you're available, invite you to let Mr. Birch know if you'd like to walk in the parade or ride on the bus. It's always a great time to be there. We always have great representation from our schools as well. And there are other events and activities in the community as well. So please let Mr. Birch know if you're able to attend. And that, I believe, is on September 7th. It's a Saturday. And then there are several other events that come up after that, 913 Day and other events that are happening across the community. And then, board, I would also just remind you, if you have not already, make sure you let Ms. Smith know if you plan to attend the KASB conference in November, the Cube Conference that's coming up in October, or the Equity and Advocacy Conference in January. And I know there's other opportunities for professional development that you all are interested in. As a reminder, we are limited this year to two, if, two conferences or two professional development events, just to try to stay in line with our budget, unless you're, someone else is funding that for you. But please let Ms. Smith know so that she can make the arrangements for you and for your travel prior to then. If you have questions, please reach out to Ms. Smith. And thank you, Leslie, for coordinating all that. With that, I'll open the floor to other board members. Ms. Drew?
First of all, I'd just like to thank everyone for the cards that you sent me during my time of recuperation. I want to say that on Friday, August 16th and 17th, I drove to Topeka, attended KASB for their nominating committee meeting. We met to look at the proposed changes within KASB constitution, and met to work for a new onboarding program for board members. We also had a candidate interview who is looking for a position to be a part of KASB. On Saturday, August 24th, I was a representative for the Legislative Committee, and we met in Topeka, and we looked at the 2024 state resolutions, the 2025 state resolutions for discussion, discuss changes we could possibly bring for each board within our state of Kansas. We also looked at federal resolutions and bill status documents. Potential issues are permanent policies suggested so that we could edit them to make sure that they are applicable to the different school districts. I will be attending another meeting on October 4th, and it will be on Zoom where we're going to verify everything. Once we go to our next formal meeting in Wichita during the month of November, we will finalize everything. And we will specifically be bringing about changes within the policies within the school district, nation, or rather statewide in the state of Kansas. And I am the representative as a part of that, and I just wanted to say thank you and let everybody know that that is happening. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Drew. And before we go to the next person, I also just wanted to make sure I shouted out all the August birthdays, Ms. Drew and Ms. Russell, who celebrate this month. Happy birthday to you all, and anyone else celebrating August birthdays. Have a happy birthday.
Thank you.
Any other board members?
I'll say.
Dr. Nguyen?
Likewise, Saturday, KASB had a board of directors meeting, and we did approve the constitutional changes. The Equity Conference is the first weekend in February. They pushed it back. Also, that there is a listening tour September 5th, lunch or dinnertime at Shining Mission Administrative Building. Last board meeting and this board meeting, we talked about the new KISA requirements as well as cell phones. And this time, we spoke, had a presentation about the teacher retention survey. And so it was brought to our attention that USD 500 did not administer because of budget concerns. And I don't remember the board having that discussion, but we would like to ask to review the, the most recent retention survey. You've already mentioned the KASB convention and the second non-related. The September 6th will be the first meeting of the Finance Committee, and that please, board members, submit your agenda items. The administration will submit agenda items, and it's from 1:00 to 2:00 p.m. virtually. And with all, with some luck, we'll have the public component of being able to ask questions in the chat, not live, full-time, real-time, but in the chat. So I think that's it. Thank you.
I, I just want to add a point of clarification. We've participated and sent out to our staff the retention survey every year, and we do have the data. We'll include that data in the end of the week. Dr. Jones, we can get it. We have the data. What we did not continue this year for financial reasons for a cost, they do additional stuff, and the first year we paid for it out of ESSER dollars. And based off of where we were prioritizing the dollars and the information that we received the first year, we did not do it the second year for 2020, 24, but we still have the information. And if that is going to be an ongoing expectation, we would just have to budget it because it was never in HR's budget. But we participate in, Mr. Dom and Ms. Middleton, actually, we hosted the regional results for the EPIC survey, I mean, the retention survey here at District Office, and collaborated together and talked about different components of it. So I, I mean, I don't know what exactly was said, but we have, we've participated every year it's been offered.
Great.
Thank you. Additional comments from board members? Next on our agenda, board, we are at executive session, item 9A. It's our motion to recess to executive session for consult, consultation with the attorney on matters which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under court with potential action to follow. There is going in at 6:35 for 10 minutes.
So moved, including.
And to include Dr. Stubblefield, Mr. Goheen, Mr. Lilly, Dr. Campbell, and Dr. Jones.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions, discussion? Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.
Mylan Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
6:35.
Thank you.
Yes, I can.
Great, thank you. Is there a motion to return to open session? Moved by Ms. Clark, seconded by Mr. Mylan. Questions? Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.
Mylan Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now entertain a motion to extend executive session for 10 minutes.
Yes, so moved, sorry.
Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Clark. Questions? Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.
Mylan Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I can.
Great, thank you. Motion to return to open session, please.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Ms. Drew, seconded by Ms. Russell. Questions? Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.
Mylan Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now entertain a motion to recess to executive session for consultation with the attorney on matters, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under coma, going in at 7:03, 7:04 for 10 minutes to include Dr. Stubblefield, Mr. Gohin, Dr. Campbell, Dr. Jones, and Mr. Clements.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Questions? Ms. Smith?
I didn't hear who moved.
I'm sorry, Ms. Russell moved and...
I'm sorry, you said Ms. Russell and...
Ms. Russell and then Ms. Clark.
Thank you. Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.
Mylan Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
...
Hi Leslie, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Great, thank you. Is there a motion to return to open session?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Drew, seconded by Mr. Mylin. Questions? Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark. Maxine Drew. Randy Lopez.
Andy Lopez, yes.
Robert Mylin Jr. Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of all parties involved under coma going in at 7:16 for 15 minutes to include Mr. Goheen? Moved by Ms. Drew, seconded by Ms. Russell. Questions? Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark. Maxine Drew. Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Mylin Jr. Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell. Dr. Nguyen. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to return to open session, please.
So moved.
Seconded questions, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Mylin Jr.
Mylin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thanks for a great meeting, everybody. Have a great night and a great rest of your week. This meeting is adjourned.